Check.
Me, 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 me. Mm-hmm. Good. Man is fogging up.
Call the meeting to order. The regular meeting for November the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty is now in session. Would everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag led by Councilperson Geneva?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take the roll call. Councilperson Geneva, here. Councilperson Sean Burden.
Present.
Councilperson Becker.
I'm here, Your Honor.
Councilperson Fisher.
Here.
Councilperson Bradley. Councilperson Massa.
Present.
Councilperson Farmer. And Councilperson Picarella.
Present.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, can I move to approve the agenda but substituting or switching the order of David and Carl since Carl's not going to be here this evening?
Yes, sir.
That mo- I make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Madam Clerk, has this agenda been posted, dated, signed, and our initial?
Yes, sir.
Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes of October the twelfth and October the twenty-sixth?
Make a motion to accept the minutes for October twelfth and October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
I'll second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Public comment? We have none. Check register and bills, financial report, sales tax report. Councilperson Becker and Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mayor, I'll move to approve the financial report in its entirety, but I would like to ask, Jason, I hate to put you on the spot, but can you characterize where you think we are in terms of the, uh, sales tax revenue trend?
I believe the sales tax revenue trend is right on target as we had predicted. We're not seeing any kind of downturn. Uh, I think you'll notice a little bit, was it last month? Uh, was a little, um, down from the previous year, but that's the end of the third quarter, so it either got caught up this month or will next month. Uh, some people pay by the quarter, so I think there was a thirty or forty thousand dollar difference which was made up this last collection.
Okay. If we get the reports in the packet, but unless you see them at a trend line, sometimes it's hard to tell what's going on. Uh, but with that, I'll make my motion to approve.
The motion's been made and seconded to approve the financial report. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Committee reports. Annexation committee. Councilperson Farmer. Mr. Eisenbach, do you have anything on annexation?
I do not.
Water committee. Councilperson Picarella.
I don't have anything.
Public welfare and fire. Councilperson Fisher.
I don't have anything to report.
Building commissioner, Mr. Cox, do you have anything on that, Mr. Eisenbach?
I do not. He has a report in your packet.
Okay, very good. Street and street lighting. Councilperson Bradley, do you have anything on that, Mr. Eisenbach?
I do not. Street test moving right along. Looks real good down there.
Yes, it does. Police department. Councilperson Sean Burton.
Um, I don't have anything, Your Honor. Um, Mr. Prunow?
No, I have nothing.
Council liaison reports. Library. Councilperson Fisher.
Uh, I have nothing to report.
Park board and green business. Councilperson Sean Burton.
I don't have anything, Your Honor.
Sewers commission. Councilperson Picarella.
I don't have anything. I think we have a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock. If we have anything, I'll get ahold of you.
Planning and zoning. Councilperson Becker.
Uh, no meeting for the month of November because of the lack of agenda.
Zoning of appeals. Councilperson Geneva.
I have nothing.
Levy commission. Councilperson Farmer. Do you have anything on the levy commission, Mr. Eisenbach?
I do not.
I want to back up to the, uh, park board and green business, um, I'm sorry. Library and school with, uh, Mr. Fisher. Just, uh, I believe the school's going to be back in session tomorrow on the seventeenth. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I don't know about anybody else, but I'll be glad when they're back in school. Boy, I know. Wow, wow. Uh, I'll leave that alone. I mean, public comment, is there a public response? Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak of anything that we had at the previous meeting? Not, I'll move on to old business. We have none. New business. We have Mr. David McKinney for the insurance renew- renewal. And we will need a motion for approval once he's completed.
How are you guys?
Good evening, sir.
Good to see you all. It's still me, even behind the cool, yeah, mask.
Mayor, for the record, I usually step out for these discussions.
Yes, sir.
Since I, if I, well, let's see, we would still have a quorum if I wasn't here. Would you mind?
You're not going home though, are you?
No, I'm just going to wait out in the lobby. David promised me he would be brief.
Just promise me you won't go home like you did the last time. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I'm going to focus on brevity today because I actually have, uh, really good news to bring and really positive news to bring, so, uh, in the midst of where we're at. Um, I gave you guys a printout, um, the packet. Um, I also have, you know, forty-eight full pages of diagnostics and review that I wasn't going to kill trees just for the fun of it, nor did I think all of you guys wanted to read it. So I just simply brought, um, the highlights for tonight, but I will leave it open to any of you. I'm easy to find. I'm close next door. If you ever want to drill down on the details, absolutely, uh, call me and we can work through it. But I wanted to just hit the highlights for tonight, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, um, if we're focusing on, it has page three down at the bottom right-hand corner. That's the page that I'm going to focus on primarily, um, for discussing this evening. We, whoops, are going to, the first thing that I wanted to mention was also just the highlights. We always talk about the employees and what an excellent job that I feel that they do in actually using in-network services and the fact that that both saves them money and saves the city money from a claims paying perspective. In the most recent period, the in-network utilization is ninety-eight point six percent. And, um, I always try to give them credit and make sure that that is known because that is incredibly high. You know, anytime you have utilization above ninety percent for in-network services, you're viewing that as a win. And so to see them consistently over ninety-eight at ninety-eight point six percent, that's just a very positive thing. It means that the employees are engaged and it means that they are using the benefits to the best of their ability to protect city resources, okay? The other thing that I wanted to mention to you guys is remember when we, um, put in place the Healthiest U, the telemedicine services? Just wanted to say that both, what excellent timing to have done that when we did it in the midst of this, not knowing that that was going to happen, but looking at the trending and utilization reports as we expected, the amount of savings to the plan for those claims that are not paying are far away in exceeding the six dollar per employee per month fee. So that is, in a sense, a revenue neutral component, and that's also a positive. That's what we hope to see. And I think that the realities, um, we don't expect the use of telemedicine to be declining anytime in the near future. But as we always say, the encouragement to utilize that is a positive thing, but we're well past the point to where that is already well better than breaking even, okay? Um, now, when looking at the current versus the renewal with ISU, I'm going to focus on the renewal with ISU because that is our recommendation, um, to make that renewal. We have, um, a lot of different marketing and I'm not going to spend the time going through all of the eleven different marketing options. We're going to focus on the ISU renewal. It is keeping the same individual, um, specific deductible. It is keeping the same contract of a twelve-twelve contract and both of the medical and the RX contribute to that. And it is keeping the same network, which is the HealthLink Open Access Two. If we focus on, and I'm going to kind of move down here, if we get down to about three-quarters of the way to the bottom, you see the laser liability. Currently, that is at two hundred and five thousand for the renewal. That is dropping to sixty thousand. That's very much a positive. You are seeing the maximum overall liability exposure dropping from one point one oh eight down to eight fifty-eight, six twenty-six, also very much a positive. If you're looking below the fixed cost changes, which is the actual insurance that you are paying for, you're having an annual increase of three thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which is one point three percent increase in the fixed costs. When you're looking at the expected liability and the maximum overall liability, you are seeing those dropping ten point seven percent and twenty-two point five percent respectively. And so when looking at where we have been year over year, plan over plan, um, as far as projections leading into two thousand and twenty-one, in the midst of difficult days and difficult times, it's one of the better renewals that we have brought in front of you guys. So, our recommendation would be, if it suits the council, would be to process and move forward with that renewal with ISU. But any questions for me?
David?
Yes, I've got a question in the back.
Yeah. So the column that says renewal ISU, how is that different from option three ISU? They're kind of labeled the same, but...
The option three ISU is increasing the individual specific deductible for each person from forty-five thousand to fifty thousand.
Okay. So it's the same plan, just increasing the deductible?
Correct. That individual spec. When we have looked at, um, last year, we did a pretty intensive look into, is there a point at which increasing the city's individual spec on each person, there is some premium savings for that, but then the maximum liability tends to grow with that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, you know what? I was just going to say that, um, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and as I've gotten to know and reach out and assist, um, the employees. You, I think that the concept of them both being appreciative and drilling down and understanding on how their plan works continues to grow. Um, I know that Jason and I, um, when I say that we work on this plan all year long, we work on this plan all year long from the fact that we are on a month-to-month basis monitoring utilization, monitoring claims reports, um, trying to stay on top of it when we try to bring to you what we believe is something that we always have it, um, on our radar. So, that's the only thing that I would add.
Well, we appreciate your, uh, your efforts that you do for other of the city purposes that I have passed on to the Mr. Contractors, uh, in the past and I'll continue to do so in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
Need a new motion to approve the renewal with ISU?
Make a motion to approve the renewal with ISU, uh, this two thousand and twenty-one insurance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. You have a good evening.
Have a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. You too. The proposal, Mr. Carl Vogt, the proposal for the engineering service for Bailey Road Reservicing Project, the STP grant, will be given by Mr. Eisenbach. It is just a presentation. You may have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Um, up on the screen, uh, as we talked last council meeting, um, Mr. Vogt, the city engineer, proposed redoing, um, Bailey Road, basically from Bloomsdale Bank to Brierton. Doesn't seem like it, but he dug up some documents today. Seems like that was in two thousand and fourteen when we repaved, uh, from that stretch. We did sidewalk, we did it in two phases. We did, uh, what's that, west of the tracks in one phase sidewalks, and then we did, um, I think we did all Mississippi, uh, and then the sidewalks and reserving were all done at different times. So, this would be a two thousand and twenty-four project, so it would be theoretically ten years since we paved. Um, it's a typical STP grant. Um, he's got a lot of different pictures in here of streets we've done, which everybody knows and everybody has seen. Uh, I think one of the things that is important is to show you how much that road, that's the length of the project, uh, how much that road has deteriorated just in six years. There's a big spot where we had a storm sewer failure, um, alligator cracking there, some patch right there in the center. That's down in the Truman Village area. Um, you can see that pavement down in there did not hold up very well at all. Two big patches there on the side and some more alligator cracking. Uh, so that is the projected cost. This is four years out. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand nine oh one, um, breakdown from there. Uh, our city expenditure portion would be one thirty-five eighty-eight, eight eighty-eight. Uh, of course, that always changes ten or fifteen percent four years from now. That's all, the only road that we have avail- available right now. Um, we, if that true, costs these true are pretty close to true. We could probably get another road done at the same time, maybe, um, go behind Bloomsdale Bank, Chestnut and that area back in there. So, there's a five thousand dollar application fee as typical with these. Has to be in by February, construction of two thousand and twenty-four. If we do not get the project, we get our five thousand dollars back.
So initially, I was skeptical about doing this because it doesn't seem like it's been that long, but like you say, this project, if it's done, would be done four years from now. And I guess I hadn't really noticed how bad that road was getting, but I agree with you. That really is in bad shape. So I, I don't have any objection to doing it, but, uh, did Carl have any insight as to why in particular that pavement did not hold up? Was it just something about the asphalt that was used or the process that they did?
My understanding is that that year, in particular, or starting that year, MoDOT approved a different ma- mix-up of the pavement mix. I don't know the specifics of it. That may have been one of the, I think that was one of the projects where that pavement was, was whatever, whatever the makeup was, it's, it doesn't hold up. If you look at A Street, some of our other streets that we've bring down in Crystal Heights, uh, the Virginia, that is holding up a lot better than Bailey. And Bailey has a lot of, you know, traffic, a tremendous amount of traffic on it, so...
As long, well, all I really want to make sure of is if we're going to pay to do this again, that we don't use that same asphalt mix and we hopefully get a better result that lasts longer this time.
Right. And there's, usually they do echelon paving where they do pavers side by side, especially in the wide, you know, as wide as that is down there. I don't believe they did that on this, um, particular job. They did a sand and seal on the cracks. If I remember correctly. Um, so that's, that's why those crack, those joints aren't holding up as well either. Now, that, I'm not a asphalt guy, but that's kind of things we've talked about over the years, why it hasn't held up. And this would just be pavement, right? It wouldn't be sidewalks and lighting and all that like we did last time? That's correct. Yeah, the, the tree department has asked that we consider pulling the bricks and maybe concrete in those in, having that stamped at the same time, just because those bricks are not holding up. They, they get a lot of grass and stuff in between them, but we'll, we can see closer to the time. If, if, so, I believe from the tracks, railroad tracks west, it's all bricks in the, in those cracks, actual bricks. From the railroad tracks east, they did stamped concrete. So some of them are missing, some of them have settled, so on and so forth. So, but that's something, yeah, no, it's, those were, that was the first phase and it was done in actual bricks. So we'll, we'll just have to consider that at some point. It's not, I don't think it's that big a deal, but...
I would tend to agree that stamped concrete seems to hold up better.
Right. So I need a motion to, um, proceed with this projec- or the application.
Any other questions, anybody?
Um, can we review the parking on that, like the Truman Village area when we review this again? It's always been kind of a problem. Uh, it's, there was, oh, this pointer doesn't work on the TVs, but... Well, when you have big pickup trucks sticking out, it's... Yeah, we can look at that then. We've had a lot of questions raised, uh, right after this was done, or so. Uh, there's just not the width there, like you said, so there, we could actually restructure that and have it horizontal parking, I guess, or vertical parking instead of the slots. Um, we can look at that when we redo it. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So especially at least on one side, um, the side closest to the church there, I think on the north side, we may be able to do some vertical parking. We'll, there's not as many businesses right there that would affect, but we'll look at it when, when the time comes. Just remind me. Okay.
You can almost hear Carl. We can do this however you want.
Yeah. Yeah, that's for sure. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm, uh, move to proceed with the project for the application. I'll second.
The motion's been made and seconded to proceed, have Mr. Vogt proceed with the project on, on Bailey Road. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Next thing on the agenda is ordinance resolutions. We have a, a bill eighteen twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty to regulate residential and business alarm systems to decrease false alarms. Mr. Eisenbach, would you speak of this, please?
I can. The, uh, Brandon and I, the city attorney, have been working on this for several months, uh, actually years. We're just kind of get, getting pushed back, but we have a lot of, it's gotten better, but we have a lot of calls in the middle of the night, middle of the day for different, um, businesses, residential homes, um, in town that the police and fire have to respond to regardless because even though ninety-nine percent of the time, thankfully, they're false alarms, they, they can't just say, oh, it's a false alarm. They have to respond anyways. So you're talking firefighters getting up at two, three, five in the morning, running these calls for no reason. So this was, uh, asked by the chief, both chiefs, to look at some sort of ordinance to help crack down on this. I believe we have talked to, the chief or chiefs have talked to the most persistent cases and things have improved some. This just puts a little bit of teeth behind just talking to someone. Yes. Is there an urgency to get this passed? There is not, but it's been in the works for probably over, well over a year. Was, was there a model that this was, uh... City of Festus. City of Festus? It looks a little dated to me, that's why I bring it up. Uh, there's no mention of like cellular use for the alarm systems. I, I've got an alarm system and I'm, I'm thinking of upgrading it, so I've been researching this myself. Um, and it seems a little harsh. The fines seem a little harsh, too. I, I would think it maybe, I don't know, I think it'd be a lot fairer if we charged per false alarm after a certain period of time or something like that.
I thought I'd be reading the back of it. It does show the, the, I think it's on the last page. I think it shows the, uh, the fines and that that are wanting to be implemented.
Yeah, five hundred dollars and ninety days in jail if you do it three times in twelve months.
That's the third time, correct?
Three times in twelve months.
Yeah.
We get sometimes three in a day.
Right.
Yeah. Well, if you charge per violation, then I think that'd be pretty harsh, too. But, you know, threatening to send them to jail seems a little, for crying wolf, I don't know. I, it just seems a little dated to me. I, I wouldn't mind trying to find something, a, a better reference. I don't know how old Festus is.
Jack, I think that, uh... Oh, I see. I was looking at section six A three. Yeah. I don't know. I, I tend to agree. I think the five hundred dollars up and then up to ninety days in jail after a third malfunction.
Well, that's, that's a summons of what the max we can do.
Right.
Under our city ordinance is five hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the intent here is compliance. Intent here is...
Let me give you a scenario. A reputable local business owner pays a reputable local alarm installer to come put a, an alarm system on their commercial building, which has just been remodeled. The alarm installer, contrary to the instructions of the business owner, puts in a bunch of wireless sensors that are not reliable and frequently misfire or don't detect the door opening, which would give, trigger the sixty-second delay or whatever before the alarm starts going off when the motion sensor gets tripped. So, the business owner finds that he's constantly having to deal with false alarms himself and is embarrassed about having to deal with having the, uh, police come over and look at it every time. But, uh, takes him six months or a year to figure out exactly which of these sensors need to be hardwired instead of, uh, on radio. And if this was in place, that business owner would have been in jail. That business owner is me.
Well, in my opinion, that's not a, a reliable installer.
Well, you can talk about Bruce all you want.
No, I'm not, I'm not, but I'm just saying, it's not a reliable installer. Get somebody else.
That's my installer, too, yeah. I can just tell you this, something has to be in place because I get the same calls that the fire department call, gets, so does the mayor, so does the police. There is a few places in particular that we've had a lot of problems with, all hours of the day and night. That's seventeen dollars a call for a firefighter, sometimes three and four times a day. It's nothing to do in particular with the wiring or the installation of the alarm. The individuals that inhabit the building.
Yeah.
I'll do whatever you guys want.
And also.
The chiefs asked me to address this because it is very problematic. Now, it has gotten better, um, since the last time we, we, we had to take a little bit steeper measures, so this didn't happen.
I, I know when we used to get a lightning strike, uh, years ago, Mike, Mike can probably, uh, tell me about this. You'd have three or four, maybe five or six alarms go off at the same time. Is that still happening or is that?
Right, I mean, I'd like to address that. I mean. It, it's really not about fining someone or putting someone in jail.
It says in here that that's an act of God.
It's about compliance.
Yeah. Um, I, I think the amount is, is a little steep. I think that we could, uh, encourage them at a little lower level. Even if it was fifty dollars instead of five hundred, people are not gonna wanna pay fifty dollars, uh, you know, I mean, I just, I think that jail time and a five hundred dollar fine is, is, my opinion is that's too much.
Up, up to five hundred is our maximum allowance in municipal courts, that's why.
And that would be up to the judge, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. I, I think lower limits would still discourage people. I know if I had, if my, if my security system went off and I had to pay fifty bucks, uh, that, that would cut into my daily activities. So, uh, I just think that, I, I don't disagree with the premise. I just think it's too high.
You guys tell me what you want. That's what we'll put in here, but it has, it, it's about compliance, not.
I, I agree with you and I think we do need to have something, but I think the, the, the higher dollar fines and the, uh, the potential of jail time needs to be connected to willful failure to address the problem somehow.
Yeah. It's different if you're just blowing it off and not doing anything about it, cause you don't want to, but, uh, I don't think that's the case most of the time.
Well, then how long do we give them?
How many times do we give them?
I don't know, but I mean, like, uh, I think having, having called a technician out to look at the problem and see what's causing the false alarms within the last thirty days should be an affirmative defense, for instance.
We have, we have not, to my knowledge, had any cases like that.
Wow.
I mean, you know, there.
I just don't like the idea of passing laws where it's up to the, the discretion of somebody as to whether they wanna put the screws to somebody or not. You know, the law should indicate what is a clear violation and what is not, as opposed to giving maximum discretion to somebody to penalize somebody and then leaving it up to the person who's doing the, the evaluation at, on that given day. No offense to our law enforcement officers.
I'll do whatever you guys want me to do, but I need some clear direction, because this was, I don't wanna just say Festus only. I know that's the one I dug up. I'm not sure what Brandon and Adam, his associate dug up either.
Yeah.
So I don't, I mean, the reason says up to five hundred, that's our, that's our municipal code. For any violation of yard, uh, if it's something the code enforcement does, that's our maximum fine. It's up to the judge at the end of the day if he wants to say it's a hundred dollars. I could put you, give you five hundred and put you ninety days in jail, but I choose to a hundred because this is your third time and you found out it was a wiring issue, whatever the case is. So I can, Brandon will be here Friday to work on some other issues. We can take it back to the drawing board if, uh, y'all wanna send me some direction by email, some thoughts. I don't, um, know what else really we can change.
What about is they wanna basically reduce the dollar amount in the ordinance and the, you know, the jail time.
Well, I'd like to do it.
How, how many repeat offenders that are problematic do we have in town?
Two.
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 Yeah.
About right. Is it about right, two? What, what do we do to, uh, I mean, I get a lot of calls to my neighbors at the care center. Are they one of the two? And I won't say, I won't ask. Um, but, but what do, what do we do with them? Cause I know that a lot of those are false alarms.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Because we have nothing.
Alright.
That's why we have this.
Alright.
So.
Um, so yeah, that's, that's why I think if we charge per false alarm, that might be more of a deterrent than a, you know, having a one, two, three strikes, you're out type of thing. But that's just my opinion. I'd like to steal about that.
Oh, okay.
I like that idea too. So they get a, a freebie once or twice, and then after that it's per every ti- every time you do it.
Yeah.
Price goes up a little bit, so that the chronic offenders, uh, you know, then take them to where they, they have a substantial deterrent. But people, you know, that live on Taylor Avenue, you know, that don't, that don't have that many, will, will, will have the same kind of.
Well, how do we, how do we differentiate? The three there is three here.
Am I correct in thinking like, we're not gonna set the price, the judges?
Yes.
Up to five hundred dollars, so. Right, but.
That's, that's what our, our court says we can fine up to on any thing misdemeanor thing we have is up to five hundred dollars.
Maximum up to five hundred. That doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but it's up to the judge. He can go that high.
He can throw it out.
Right.
They can, they can come in and plead their case and say, the squirrel ate the wire, and it wouldn't quit going off. I mean, there, I'll do whatever you guys instruct me to do.
We're setting a cap. The cap is five hundred.
Yeah.
So us putting a dollar amount is just gonna be the ca- the cap for the judge.
I, I wanna go back to what Rick was saying, because we, I, I don't know, and I wanted to ask this question, does this take into account personal security systems that are get, becoming more and more popular? Cause a lot of those will automatically ring the police department and the fire department.
I don't know that we have too many problems with home security systems, but.
Yeah, but, but getting back to Rick's point, those probably aren't your repeat offenders. Those are.
So they wouldn't, right, so they wouldn't.
The occasional offenders, which.
So we won't, we would probably be like, hey, we get it.
Right.
You know, there's, there is chronic offenders on this. The, the both chiefs asked me to bring this to you. We've researched it. We've done a lot of work on it. I'll do whatever you want me to do, but they would like to see something done.
I would like to see something done too, but I think I'd prefer to, uh, maybe get together with Councilman Fisher and bring some recommendations to you prior to Friday when you're gonna meet with the attorney and.
I don't have a problem with.
Target this a little bit more tightly.
And I'll write up some stuff and then email, email.
Yeah, just send it to me by email and that way I can give it to Brandon when he's here.
Right.
I meant, I didn't have a problem with this. Does this speak?
I do.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it neither myself. I mean, you're, you're putting a cap on it or, or, uh, or, or fines for courts, the maximum right now is five hundred for all the misdemeanors. That doesn't mean the judge is gonna automatically fine your five hundred, but, uh, I, I've sat in court quite a few times and, uh, sometimes he's just dismissed it because, uh, the individuals plead their case and, and he, he just listens to them. Uh, but anyway, uh, it's, it's the council's desire, whatever they want, you know. Well, uh, if you elect to table this and then bring it back with, after some further discussion, that's, that's what we're all about.
I'll move to table ordinance bill, uh, eighteen twenty-three dash twenty twenty to the next regular council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. And Mr. Bruno and, uh, Mr. Eisenbeis, I, I would ask you if it's possible to, uh, whenever these, we get together on this for the next time, for input, if you could possibly come up with some maybe man hours and equipment, fuel, what's been wasted on this, that, uh, that we are paying for. So if you could do that for me, I would appreciate it. I mean, just, it's just a thought that you can bring forward.
One of the things that you have to take into consideration too is the liability of lots of the firemen going there when these alarms go off. That also would be, you know, that kinda affects, you know, the, the safety of citizens. Our also don't have to be running codes because, you know, something a little more serious. But there's a lot, you look, fire trucks moving and stuff like that, and I think the situation is where you're like, yeah, and then if you're like, well, that's a false alarm, that's kinda goofy. But there's one particular stop that found that seems that, that went, went on for twenty-six years and they, they kinda told us and it, and nothing ever really came about. So this is the first time that maybe this might give them a little wake-up call, but.
And that is fine, uh, but I, I think there'd be some helpful, uh, information and input from, uh, the fire department and the police department as far as what they're up against.
You can just run a cat entry, uh, see how many you've had in the last three years, three, three years? Okay, cause you, you, when you go, the fire department goes as well, right first, so. Yeah, okay.
Anything else on that, Mr. Eisenbeis?
I do not.
Uh, city administrators report.
Uh, the one thing on there is the pool water bill, uh, which this year totaled eleven thousand, five hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. Um, which is, I don't have the entire printout in front of me, but a lot better than they've done in years past. I think they fixed a few leaks. Uh, the new filter system is working. Uh, if you remember, I think, uh, the year last year was, I, I wanna say around fifteen and the year before that is around twenty-something, twenty, twenty-three. So, um, they've, they're doing a, a good job with, uh, their water consumption. Uh, typically we transfer this out of the, um, the storm water, uh, and park fund and into the water fund, on a motion from the council. Yes.
I move to go ahead and pay the water bill for the, uh, pool or the park department and take it out of the sewer, uh, sewer and park fund. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried.
Uh, on my report, the few things I had I wanted to discuss, um, kinda as much time as I've been spending down in Ward One, uh, while this project is going on, uh, kinda discovered that we have seven lots down there, uh, for some reason or other. We, we own seven buildable lots. Um, some of them may have to be lot combinations. I don't know how small they are, how narrow. Uh, so I just kinda wanted to get some direction on the council. Um, we're not making anything off these lots, except we cut the grass, we pay someone to cut the grass, maintain it, et cetera. Uh, so I didn't know if there was a desire to sell any of these lots, sell them all, uh, try one at a time, get them appraised, um. What, what does, keep them? Some of them probably will. I didn't run a, a report through the, uh, front office to see if there's any water bill or late, late fees or any liens on them. Uh, the one we tore down last year, we don't own still. We have a lien on it, but it's still in the legal process. We'll, we'll never get our money out of that one. So, uh, these, I, I don't have a history on why we own them, um, but we own seven separate ones. And, and they're, for the most part, I'm sorry. Yeah, they're in your packet, yeah. Right, there's two next door, there's, uh, there's two on England, I believe, two on, uh, I wanna say. Ca- uh, County Road. Uh, so there's, I, I don't know why. Some of them, um, may, you know, whoever buys them wanna, may wanna have them rezoned for, um, apartments or, or something think, you know, different than their zone now, or they wanna do a lot combination, cause you can't get, there, some of them are narrow lots. I, I mean, I just don't know what you guys wanna do with. Uh, and I don't know what a lot goes for down there, but I wouldn't think it would be more than about three thousand dollars. I really don't know. Um, I could find out kinda what, what the other ones have have been sold, but, uh, we probably need to get them appraised and, and surveyed and then sell whatever on top of that cost. Um, what will we tell them for?
Sell all of them.
It'd be nice to see, to see, uh, one of, uh, there's a couple of guys that are doing some good work down there in Ward One fixing up some houses on County Road and they're building at least one.
Chestnut.
Check corner of Chestnut, maybe two. Uh, so hopefully we can get, get some stuff going down there.
I think that's a, the residents would like that too, probably, that we sell them.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion.
I'll make a motion that you, um, get appraisals and surveys on all seven lots.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I do have one question I'd like to make. Looking at the location of some of these lots, uh, pending the outcome of discussions about, uh, locating a, a new Hickey White Park across County Road from, uh, or south of the, uh, ball fields there. A couple of these are on County Road or near the intersection of County Road and England. And since, uh, the property on the west side of County Road is probably not gonna be buildable because of its elevation. If we needed to put any, uh, for instance, facilities, buildings or anything down there, we might wanna hang on to one or two of those lots for, uh, purposes of putting a park building there. Is it just as a possibility?
We can look into that.
I don't know if that's a dumb idea, but we're gonna have to put a bathroom somewhere.
Yeah, I think, um, I was talking, cause I called Mr. Cox on all these to make sure, especially those down there weren't in the floodway or the flood plain. Um, and, and asked him about almost that same question. He believes that we can build a bill, a bathroom facility, what we'd be building, more than likely. He said he can put that down on that property, but.
On the west side, okay.
With no problem.
Okay.
But, well, we'll see what they come back as, as.
Let's get them surveyed anyway.
So the motion's bid bait and seconded. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried.
Uh, the next thing I had on the agenda was, um, since we're only having one meeting a month, typically we have two readings of the new water rates. Uh, one in December, one in January. Um, so I need to know if the council is, what the desire is. What I have, uh, proposed for you is two percent. Um, when typically we do over the last probably three or four years, I think we've done three and a half percent. Uh, so because we refinanced the plant, um, opened up some capital, have a little bit of breathing room. Uh, I still believe, and I've said from the beginning, we need to still do a small water rate increase. And I, two percent is about as low as I think we should go. Um, you've got some numbers for neighboring communities. Um, this would be about a dollar eighty-five, uh, increase, uh, in water and sewer. Now, keep in mind, we do have fifty cent increase in recycling, uh, this year. So altogether, uh, four thousand gallon user would increase about two dollars and thirty-five cents a month.
I tend to agree. I think we should continue to increase rates just a small amount every year. Not doing that is what got us into the situation that we were in before.
And I will echo what Mr. Becker said, not doing that. I was, been on the council since nineteen eighty-six and we was in trouble then. And that's, we've had some, we've had to make up some ground from over the years, so we are, we are getting there.
So that's a two percent increase for, you said one in December and one in January, so that's two percent for both months, I mean.
No, I, we read it twice. Um, we always table it and then read it a second time. Only having one meeting a month, I'd have to bring it to the next meeting.
Okay. It's one, one rate increase. I thought you were trying to read it twice, so, okay.
Any other comments on it from the council?
You don't need a motion on that, right? You just want.
No, I have, somebody just tell me that's okay? Or I guess you can make a motion. I'll have an ordinance at the next meeting.
Uh, you got one thing on your report. Did, did we get any money in the CARES Act for the, for the, uh, visual system we put in, audiovisual?
Everything I applied for, we got.
Oh, so I did pay for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Eisenbeis?
I do not.
I have the marriage report, um, really the only, I'm glad to see school back in session tomorrow. And, uh, uh, I know my wife spends a lot of time with, with my grandkids on their homework, four or five hours a day, so she'll be glad to see that happen, too. Uh, but anyway, on another note, I did have a, uh, a conversation with, um, Mayor Sam Richards from the City of Festus today, and he just wanted to let me know that the City of Festus is showing concern about the upcoming Christmas parade, in which the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, as well knows, they're in charge of that, and they did, uh, the Chamber has o- okayed a Christmas parade, I think it was last month, is that correct, Mr. Fisher? Sep- September? But he's just showing, showing some concern about it, uh, being as we, you know, we are in a, in a, uh, a red zone for the, for the coronavirus. Uh, you know, it, it's kind of like, I, I really, I really hate to take anything away from, from, uh, from the children, from, from the adults and everybody that enjoys a, a joyful thing, such as the Christmas parade. Uh, but on, but on the other hand, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to, uh, to look out for the, the welfare of the people. You know, it's kind of like whenever I was asked about, you know, are you going to allow Halloween? You know, kind of the way I look at it, if, on Halloween, if, if you don't want to pass out candy, turn your lights off and shut your doors. But I, I know there's no comparison between Halloween and this here, but I don't know. I, I've got a little bit of concern about, you know, uh, being a, being in the red, you know, the red zone that we're in with the, with the, uh, virus and everything as far as, I don't want to be a, I would hate to see this community become a super-spreader. Because right now, I mean, that's, that's what everything's about right now, is this virus. And we will, we will, uh, get over it, we will get through it, I, I've got all the confidence in the world on that. Uh, but, you know, he's showing concern, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about it. But here again, if, I, I think, I know me and, uh, Mr. Picorola myself kind of talked about it, but I think if people would just use a little bit of, you know, a little bit of, of common sense, you know, and, and, you know, you, you wear your mask, you wash your hands, you, you social distance, I don't know how that would, how that's going to play out on a Christmas parade, from the past years of all the parades that I've seen as far as social distancing and, and, and whatnot. Now, masking, you know, that's, that's another thing. I, you know, I would just, I, I understand that they're going to have a, a Chamber's going to have a, another meeting this Wednesday. Now, whether that's on their agenda or not, I, I don't have any idea. But I did get, like I said, I got a, a, a call from Mayor Richards today, and the City of Festus is showing concern about it, and I'm concerned about it, and, and I don't want this community or, or Jefferson County or the surrounding area be accused of a super-spreader of the, of the Corona. And I, I would just like to poll the council and, and see what the, what the council feels about it. How, how do you all feel about this upcoming Christmas parade?
Do we know what the other cities are doing? Are they still having theirs?
That I, I honestly, I don't know.
Festus is, uh, concerned about the streets, you know, opening up the streets for that. Um, I am as well. I'm on the Chamber Board, and, uh, I've talked to Tom DeBree's, our executive director. I talked to Jason this morning, and I've talked to Greg Camp, and I actually, uh, called Eric Ammons at the hospital and talked to him this morning as well. So, uh, I am going to be presenting this at the Chamber, uh, Board Meeting on Wednesday. Uh, the cities are both, uh, not in favor of doing this. I personally am not. I, I voted against it in Sept- in September, um, but in September, the numbers were a lot different, and it looked like they might be getting better, and, uh, I think some of the folks were just, uh, really wanting to be able to do something in the community. But now that the numbers are where they are, it's, it's a different situation. So, um, Eric told me that the hospital's full, and that they have the highest number of COVID patients today, as of this morning, that they've had since this outbreak happened. Um, he said that they, a lot of this has been traced back to Halloween, and with, um, you know, Halloween parties and costume parties and that. So, uh, now we've got, uh, Thanksgiving on the horizon, and then following that up with a Christmas parade just seems, um, irresponsible to me. So I can't speak for the whole board, but, uh, I suspect that once all the facts are out there, and with the cities not being in favor of it, and the hospital not being in favor of it, and I know at least several of the board members are not, are in agreement, that this is not a good idea, I suspect that Wednesday, at the end of that meeting, we will be putting out a, an, an announcement that it's probably canceled. So that's, that's what I expect, but like I say, I'm, I'm just one board member, I can't speak for the whole board. But I think it, to, to the mayors, I, I think it is good for the council to, uh, you know, to voice their opinion, whether they're in favor of it or not in favor of it. So Festus has already done that, so whenever I present on, uh, on Wednesday, uh, it, you know, we can say that it's unanimous, both cities are in opposition to the continuing the Christmas parade, or i- if that's the way you guys feel.
I guess, like I, I had a conversation earlier today, uh, with the mayor, and I think if people use a little bit of common sense, you know, they might be able to do this, because it's not going to be, it's not going to be crowded, I don't think.
A little bit of common sense would overdraw a lot of people's account.
I understand that. But this is, this is a chamber function, not a city function.
That's true, but I, I mean, if, if the council doesn't mind them doing that, then we can tell them that, but I, I think, Mayor, what you were asking for is not, you know, uh, whether or not they can do it, but are we in favor of it?
Right, just, I, I would just like to poll our council and, and see what you all think, you know? I mean, um, like I said, it's, I just don't want to be accused of a super-spreader, and, and believe me, I mean, I, I watch the news audit every day on a daily basis, and these, these numbers are not going anywhere. Um.
Six hundred and seventy over the weekend.
What, what's the ICU beds like in the hospital now, Rick?
They don't have any.
Oh, they don't have any? Well, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, the ICU beds are full, and the old, the old PCU, the Transitional Care Unit, uh, where if you were having one day, like outpatient surgery, that's been converted to overflow, and it's full, too. There are no ICU beds available at the local hospital.
I, uh, don't keep it up on the local staffs for the hospitals as I do, uh, on St. Louis, because my wife works at a hospital in the city. But, uh, St. Louis University Hospital's admissions for COVID patients tripled in three days. I'm sorry, doubled in three days, and it's on pace to do that on a regular basis. Uh, I'm going to give you a few stats that I put together for an employee that, or, uh, an email that I sent to our employees today. Um, since March, the, uh, COVID death rate in Missouri has been about one point four percent, which is a lot lower than it was in the first few months, if you look at it from March till now, because they got better at treating it, but it's still thirty-five times more likely to kill you than the flu. The, uh, transmission rate right now is such that twenty-seven percent of all of the COVID cases in Jefferson County since all this started have occurred in the last two weeks, or have been, uh, tested and confirmed in the last two weeks. And that combined with, uh, I'd slightly take issue with something that the mayor said, I think the numbers are going someplace, they're getting worse.
Yeah.
All the time. So, given that, and, uh, given that, uh, some incredibly encouraging vaccine news, I guess you guys, uh, probably all saw that this morning. The name of the game at this point is keeping it from spreading, uh, any faster than it has to until you can get to the spring. So I would be in favor of, uh, encouraging them to cancel this, personally. The, my professional training tells me that you don't risk a lot for a little, and while it, a parade might seem like a big deal, in the grand scheme of things, you can get by without it.
Well, I'd just like to add, you know, uh, they, they've managed to have football games and baseball games by, by changing the game, and, and if you think about what, what we could do to make it work, uh, there's really like two things, there's the crowd and there's the participants. I think the crowds might be smart enough to space themselves out, but participants are the ones I'd worry about, the people on the floats and the, and the bands and all that.
Yeah.
So I think for that reason alone, I, I would not be for it.
I was actually wondering, how many people do you think they're going to get to participate? Or, I mean, are all the marching bands from ten different high schools?
I, I don't think you're going to get, get a lot, but.
Some of them are ninety people registered, some of those are walking units, some of them are floats, and some of them are like serdics and people that are going to have motorcycles and that, so.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so we're, we're just under a hundred units, and that doesn't count emergency vehicles.
What do you, what do you normally have, uh, Rick? Do you, do you recall?
A little over a hundred, so it's down, but it's not down, like, it's not half, it's more than half of what we normally have. So it's down a little, but it, there's still a lot of people.
Okay. And that's, you know, that's a concern of mine as far as, uh, I, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with Councilperson Ginever, I, I don't worry so much about the, the, the people on the sides and that, I watch it, I think, you know, they, they stay in their cars and this and that, but the people on the floats, you know, and, 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 and the marching people, I, you know, I, I don't know, I just, I, I just, I've got concerns about it. Do I want, do I want to do away with it? No, I, you, we, we've done enough to do away with the joy of, of, uh, just, things, everything, you know, schools and, and, and whatnot, you know, things that I guess people take for granted, but, um, I, I just show concern about the, the well-being of, of the, of the community and the surrounding area.
I, I, you know, without mentioning any names, there, there's a bar across the street from my business, and when I leave there on Saturday afternoons about four-thirty, the weather's been nice enough that the front door is open and their patio is open, and, uh, the place is packed every Saturday, shoulder to shoulder, I've never seen anybody in there wearing a mask, and they've even had a couple of events out in the parking lot where they've had bands and DJs, and there'll be two hundred people in that back parking lot, not a mask among them. So I'm thinking, um, you know, that whenever I said that I thought that a little bit of common sense might overdraft some people, uh, I see people every weekend on Main Street that they couldn't take less precaution unless they were trying to kill themselves. I mean, they're just not even trying, so I.
In fairness, Rick, I'm not sure that's the Christmas parade crowd.
Well, that's true, but still, I'm just saying, um, who, how do you, how do you differentiate?
Right.
You know, where, where do you draw the line? I, I see people on Main Street, I see old, you know, grandmothers and their kids on Saturday, I've had people come into my store, I've asked them to put on a mask and they get mad and leave. So I, I'm, I'm skeptical as to whether or not this thing could be pulled off in a safe way. Uh, if everybody was on board with trying to follow precautions, I think maybe we could do it, but my, my observation has not been that people are willing to do that, so.
Anybody else? Mayor?
I want to keep the school open, so I feel like it's just going to put kids in more jeopardy.
And that's, that's really what I think the focus needs to be on, you need to try to keep the school operating, you need to try to keep everybody working that you can, you need to make sure that the water flows, you need to make sure that the emergency services can do their jobs, you need to make sure everybody can get groceries. There's, uh, there's a hierarchy of needs. And getting the kids out of the mayor's hair is, is top of the list.
It's, it's not so much pappy as it is mammy, I'll guarantee it.
Well, the kids just need to be in school.
Yes, they do, yes, they do. So, uh, anyway, I will, I will get back with, uh, uh, Mayor Richards, and Rick, if you'll, you'll take that back to your, your meeting with the Chamber. I mean, I know they're, I, I, I understand their, their dilemma, you know, but I think you said earlier that back in September, when they, when they talked about this and debated this, they took a long, hard look at it, but back in September, I don't think it was near as bad as it is right now. So, at, at any rate, well, we'll move on. Uh, I will go to the roundtable, uh, Councilperson Massa?
Um, today we went walking from, we live over on Sun Ridge, and we cut over into the park, and I think they're paving more sidewalks along the way, and so we're very excited about that, that's very nice to walk that in our kids' place park, so it's great.
Yes.
Looking real good, I mean, you, from one end to the other now, sidewalk, it's really nice looking.
And there were a ton of people out walking it today, so.
And, uh, pass that on to the, to the park department, uh, Mr. Compton and his crew, and, uh, they've done an outstanding job up there as far as, as far as the park. Anything else, Ms. Massa? Councilperson Picorola?
I don't have anything.
Councilperson Schonberg?
I don't have anything.
Councilperson Fisher?
Uh, just briefly, uh, I was on my way home last night and, uh, hit a deer, uh, on sixty-one, sixty-seven, right there by Twin City Autobody, and, uh.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. That's, that's planning, man.
I got a watch up in the back.
Anyway, I bring that up not, not for the fun, but, uh, I bring that up because, uh, I wanted to point out that the two police officers that came out and picked the deer up and did a report on my, you know, me hitting the deer, uh, couldn't have been any better, they were very professional and quick and covered everything, did a great job, so, uh, Mike, if you want to let them know that, uh, they did a great job. I mean, it, it was a simple thing, but they just did a good job. Okay, thanks.
That's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Becker?
Uh, uh, one question on the city administrators' report. Uh, Jason, did you want to talk about, uh, our schedule for next year? You want to keep it at one meeting a month? Any discussion on that?
Nope.
I think it's working fine.
I don't see a change.
I think it's working fine for now. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Eisenbeis? Captain Bruno, you, uh, have anything?
Uh, no, just wanted to say, you know, we have the officers, and I'm sorry, I also appreciate the raise, um, Jason and, and, you know, J. D. Robbins, we appreciate it, and thank you, guys. Thank you everybody for the raise.
Very good.
We appreciate you.
Mr. Ginever?
I just got one thing about, uh, and I guess I ought to ask it to Mr. Eisenbeis, because we don't have the department heads here, but I've been wondering about the animal shelter, uh, the one that's going up and the one that is not being used anymore? There, there were a few animals in there, and I don't, I, did they get rid of them, or?
No, we still use the ones down there.
Oh, you still do?
Yeah.
And I have it right now.
Cat down there the other day.
Yeah, he had one cat, and we, I believe we have a bite cage, uh.
Okay. Okay.
But that, that is still in use.
It was, uh, cold that morning, Jack, even you was down there when I passed you up, and the animals were probably inside.
You, you did, you did pass me out.
I knew I would have been.
Yeah, you quit trying to offer me a ride, too. Uh, and so the new, the new one's almost up now, right? It looks like it.
Um, I don't think the, uh, fell all the way up.
But is the, is the brick part of it up? It's, I, I'm wondering if I'm looking at the right building, in other words.
The building is the one of the single roof to the bar.
To the south.
To the south, yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, I believe they started siding today.
Okay.
Uh, that's inside flooring, it's not forward, um, the drains are in, uh, some of the animal stuff is going on, uh, so the floor has to be forward, uh, and, uh, we're going to run out of time, we'll probably have that fully empty this year, so channel running and everything on the other side.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's all I have, because I'll, I might get some questions about that with it being in that location now, so. And everybody have a good Thanksgiving and be safe. And everybody have a good Thanksgiving and be safe.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, nothing, motion carried. We are adjourned. Yeah, yeah, yeah.